All right. Good evening and welcome to the City of Topeka Planning Commission Meeting. We are a commission appointed by the mayor and city council to plan for the orderly growth and development of the community, to hold public hearings and to make recommendations to the governing body on planning items. Please note the governing body rules state that public hearings for planning cases shall be conducted solely by the planning commission. No additional public hearings will be conducted by the governing body. Tonight's cases are tentatively scheduled to be heard by the governing body next month. Agendas can be found at topeka.org. Some of tonight's cases involve public hearings. For those cases, the procedure will be as follows. First, the planning department staff will summarize the case. Next, we will hear from the applicant or their representative. Then we will receive public testimony. Comments are limited to four minutes. For agenda items that do not involve public hearings, public comment is allowed provided the person has signed up on Topeka Speaks or has notified staff prior to 5:00 p.m. today. Comments are limited to four minutes. Finally, at the end of regular business, the commission will entertain general comment regarding matters related to the commission business, provided the person has signed up on Topeka Speaks or has notified staff prior to 5:00 p.m. today. Comments are limited to four minutes. Amanda, would you please take the roll?
Mr. Dean?
Here.
Ms. Nelson?
Here.
Ms. Heron?
Here.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Cowt?
Here.
Mr. Nager?
Here.
Ms. Pearson?
Here.
Mr. Tobavin?
Here.
Ms. Hanen?
Here.
We have enough for our form.
Thank you. Next is approval of minutes from September 18, 2023.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Right. Moved and seconded. Would you please take the roll?
Mr. Tobavin?
Aye.
Ms. Hanen?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Mr. Cowt?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Heron?
Aye.
Ms. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Minutes pass.
Thank you. Next, recognition of incoming planning commissioners.
Yes. Good evening, commissioners. As you all know, we have three new members that will be joining the planning commission with us tonight, so if you see some new faces around you. I think I'll quickly just go through, introduce everybody, and let you, you know, fill in any comments that you want to add. But first, we have Jennifer Hanen that will be joining us.
I'm an architect. I've been in Topeka for 10 years, served on some other boards. Glad to be here.
Thank you for joining us. Willie Brooks?
Yep. So I'm a contractor and work in the design phase and pre-construction most of the time, and so excited to serve with you guys.
And then last but not least, Katie Nelson.
Katie Nelson, I'm the CEO of the Topeka Area Building Association. I work with contractors, helping them continue with their education and help just the building trades in general along the lines of in Topeka and the surrounding areas. And I work with the students in the area to help them get into the trades and get interested in the trades as well.
Wonderful. Well, thank you all so much for your willingness to join and help be a part of supporting the planning commission. We look forward to working with you as staff and as a commission as a whole.
Thank you. Next is declaration of conflict of interest or ex parte communications by members of the commission or staff. Is there anything that needs to be talked about in these? Seeing none, we'll move into action items. Number one, CU23-5 Schoolhouse Rentals LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a case CU2305 by Emilio Cuevas. He is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for the expansion of his existing apartment building. It would allow five additional four-unit buildings added to the property. It would be a maximum of 28 dwelling units. There, the property was, there's an existing eight-unit apartment on the property. It was constructed around 1998. That is circa the Shawnee County Appraiser website. The property was rezoned back in 1998 as part of the historic North Topeka Neighborhood Plan. It was rezoned at that time to the X District. The X District at the time was intended to accommodate an existing pattern of mix of uses for commercial and residential in the neighborhood. At the time, the CUP is now required because the additional five-unit apartment buildings exceed the expansion that's allowed in the X1 zoning. Expansions of legal nonconforming uses in X1 are very limited and limited to about 10% of the existing floor area. So he can't expand his apartments in X1 without getting a CUP. The conditional use permit now is required for multiple family in X1. The area, okay. To the north of his property is, to the east side of his property is the old Soldier Creek Trail. That is zoned OS1, which is open space district. The north side is also zoned OX1 for open space. Currently, there's going to be a trail connection that will be built connecting the old Soldier Creek Trail with Waddell Street and the Tyler Street Bike Path, which is currently under construction. That trail connection is in budget and proposed to be constructed sometime either at the end of this year or early next year. The area to the south and west is predominantly light industrial uses, zoned X1 as well. Those uses likely predate the current X1 zoning. Okay. Okay. The area is within the North Topeka West Planning Area, and the land use classification is mixed-use low intensity. The purpose of that district is to support a balance of residential, office, and neighborhood commercial uses for, within a dense neighborhood residential setting, interact with pedestrian, provide for pedestrian usage. The proposal, which locates higher-density housing along the higher-traffic corridor, improves housing stock, these do meet the goals and guiding principles of the Neighborhood The purpose of the X District at the time it was created was to provide for compatible mixed uses and to help increase housing density, improve existing housing stock. And the proposal does help, does implement those goals of the plan, increases the housing density, which is consistent with that in X1, which would be 12 units per acre. 28 units maximum would be allowed here. He's doing 20 new units to add to the existing eight units on the 2.25-acre property. The CUP also allows this owner to make significant investments in his property he is unable to do currently under the current zoning, helping to raise the property value and potentially improving property, the value of surrounding properties, which he is unable to do with his current zoning. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the conditions of the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Driver, are there any questions for staff from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Annie, could you clarify? I'm a little confused about the off-street parking that's in here. Could you look at the staff report? In the first paragraph, this is page three of the staff report. The first paragraph of off-street parking has a parenthetical, says 28 total stalls required. And that's for a complete build-out of this, or is that from the get-go?
Currently, that is for the complete build-out. I think what they're showing here is more than what they're actually required to do in the X1 district. X1 allowed for a reduced parking requirement, so for multi-family, they're actually only required to do one stall per unit. So they are showing the 19 existing stalls, and they're showing the 24 for the first phase, which is, looks like it's two, it's two buildings. So they're showing the two, and then they're also showing future parking, but we can discuss that more as we go along.
Well, in the second paragraph under there, heading is surfacing.
Okay.
It says the applicant proposes the use of the existing parking, and the existing parking is 19. Does that mean existing and proposed?
That is the existing parking is 19, what's already there. Proposed parking is, that what's shown in that new parking lot. Yeah.
Okay. I guess what I was getting at, Annie, was I'm having trouble connecting between the 19 and the 28.
The 19 and the 28, and you're in...
Well, the 19 is the existing.
Okay. 19 is existing, 24 is proposed, that's right. And then, yeah, I guess what 24 is meant to imply is the parking for Phase 1. And then the 25 future parking stalls are what's shown as Phase 2, the next phase.
So it said the applicant proposes the use of the existing and the proposed Phase 1.
Yes, they're going to be using the 19 existing, and then they're proposing 20 more with the first two buildings, which might be more than what they actually need.
There have been, at times, they have concerns. I have concerns about whether you have too much parking, that an applicant prefers the concrete over grass, open space. If, during a site plan review, if the applicant comes in and proposes far in excess of the requirement, is that...
They, we can discuss it further at site plan review. This is really a conceptual site plan. So, and I think that can be, that can be one of those details that can be looked at a little further, if they want to do less.
If I want to, if I want to put in 10 parking stalls where only one is required by the city, is that generally, if I insist on that...
If you want to put in 10 parking, and that's typical, that often the property owners want more parking than what's required.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for staff? If not, we are going into applicant presentation. Is there a applicant representative here tonight?
My name is Emilio Cuevas. I usually don't have a lot to say, but when I came here early, I looked up at the screen, and I looked at the layout, and I realized something. I'm Emilio Cuevas, and I'm the owner of Schoolhouse Rentals. I realized that I have owned that property since, for about 35 years. And in 98, I guess I put in an eight-unit apartment building, but I've owned that property for 35 years, and the area around it really has not changed a whole lot. And I find myself in a position where I can add to the area, and it looks like I may be the only one who wants to add to the area, but I want to add to the area for quality housing. It's as simple as that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? If not, thank you.
Okay.
Next, we have public testimony. Is there anybody in the public that'd like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and move into discussion by commissioners. Do we have anything to discuss, or I'd be open for a motion? I'd kind of like to point out, I know the Curtis Cemetery is right behind this, and I think having this being more developed, I would hope, would make it more likely that the cemetery doesn't have other folks living there in that area. My scout troops cleaned it up before, and so I think this would be helpful in that regard.
I think it would help clean up the entire area, personally, because, like you said, it is kind of a drab, low area, and there is some homeless living over in there.
Mr. Cowt?
You ready for a motion?
I am.
So, my motion is moved to adopt the findings and analysis, and the staff report is the findings and analysis of the planning commission, and recommend approval of the requested CUP, subject to the conditions set out in the staff report.
Thank you. Is there... Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? If not, would you please take the roll?
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Heron?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Cowt?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Hanen?
Aye.
Mr. Tobavin?
Aye.
Motion passes 9-0.
Thank you. Next up is action item number two, PUD 23-7 by Dreammakers LLC. Does staff like to present?
Need a little staff switcheroo.
Put it in the wrong slot there. He took your seat.
Thank you.
Mr. Sharp?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Commissioner?
PUD 2307 by Dreammakers LLC. This is a rezoning at 2900 Southeast Kentucky Avenue. They are requesting a rezoning from ONI 2 Office and Institutional District to PUD Planned Unit Development with an ONI 2 use group and operation of automobile sales, subject to conditions as described in the staff report. The applicant, Anthony Griffin, big picture, is requesting to utilize five parking spots on his property for the operation, for the allowed use of automobile sales. Here we have the aerial map of 2900 Southeast Kentucky Avenue. The parcel is approximately .4 acre in size. The address is located in the High Crest neighborhood with the Central Highland Park neighborhood to the north. The property was annexed in 1959. The principal structure was built as a bank in 1970. To get into a little bit of the zoning, again, the zoning district that is currently at the site is ONI 2 Office and Institutional. To the east, you have a C2 commercial lot that is a convenience store. To the north, R2 single-family neighborhood. To the south, you see the M3 and M2 zoning districts there. If we go back to the aerial map, you can see that that is a parking lot for the Garden Apartment Complex, that M3 and M2 zoning. So the M2 zoning is for that Garden Apartment to the south. And to the west, you have R1 single-family dwelling district of the High Crest neighborhood. The future land use for the area, again, we're using those neighborhood plans, neighborhood area plans. The property is located in the High Crest Neighborhood Plan and is subject to the 2015 Neighborhood Plan. Future land use is projected to be neighborhood commercial for this area. To the north, south, and west, you have the residential low density that's projected to still be the single-family neighborhoods there. Let's picture the site and the parking lot at 2900. Again, with this PUD, if granted, the ONI 2 Office and Institutional uses will still be the base zoning district for the property. Again, this is to allow no more than five cars or light trucks for sale on site on those five, on five parking stalls there. Auto repair, it will not be permitted on site. That'll have to be done off-site at another location. These part, this is for display only, so, yeah, nothing, no heavy auto repair. No use, we, another stipulation we have is no use of feather signs or balloons. That's, we will not permit that, just so the site can maintain its character. A little bit about the parking, this will not displace the required parking. I believe that's in the staff report, but again, there's only five parking spots. Here's a little diagram of what the applicant proposes. The five parking spots to the left there will be for the sale of automobiles. To the right will be the parking for employees and customers. Any substantial, any substantial change may require an amendment to the PUD. That's why we have this as a planned unit development, so any, yes, major change of use or anything like that, it would have to either go through the minor or major amendment We did receive one email comment regarding the, at the PUD. We responded back to, we responded back to the public, that person inviting them to the Neighborhood Information Meeting and explaining the, what we're doing here, what this PUD is about. But other than that, we received no other public comments. The Neighborhood Information Meeting was conducted at 2900. Only people to attend were city staff and the applicant. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the application to rezone the property from ONI 2 Office and Institutional District to PUD Planned Unit Development, allowing ONI 2 uses and automobile sales, subject to conditions described in the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. I've got a quick question. Where did the number five come from for...
From the applicant.
Okay. Seems kind of low for a dealership with that many parking stalls, so I'm just kind of curious.
Mr. Griffin, the applicant's here, and he could be happy to...
Thank you. Are there any other questions for staff?
Can you explain where he can put a sign then? I mean, is it just on the existing sign that's there, or can it in the windows, or where can the signage go?
Existing signage would still apply. They can still apply for sign permits in accordance with the sign code in Chapter 18. They would still allow, we can still allow temporary signs, yard signs.
Yeah, on a limited basis.
So the, the temporary, there's a section in the sign code regarding temporary yard signs. That can still apply. They can still use those. We would, we were just trying to shy away from the types of signs that you see up and down major arterial that kind of fall into disrepair.
Okay. So the existing sign on the property, they could change that out, correct?
They can, they can change it out per the sign code, yes.
And anything in the windows themselves, or...
That would, the sign code would apply to that, too. I would, well, I, I can get back to you on that, but yes, the window signs would be allowed per the sign code.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Cowt?
Mr. Chairman, William, the, kind of dumbed down the proposal here. The alternative for the applicant would be the C3 or C4 zoning, which staff would not have recommended approval for because of the number of uses that would be permitted that would be incompatible with the residential, nearby residential properties, right?
Yes, correct.
So you worked with the applicant to, I don't know what the applicant came in the door asking for, but, but landed on the PUD proposal to allow what otherwise would not be permitted in the, in the ONI 2 district?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And made the, staff made the determination that automobile sales and leasing is something with the conditions that are attached here that would be compatible with the neighborhood property?
The conditions that are attached, we believe that will be compatible, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
This might be better sued for the applicant, but just in case staff knows, it looks like there's a possibility in this image that the parking lot connects with the parking lot for the apartment building to the south. Is that the case? Or I guess more importantly, for our purposes, would those be connected in any way after, if we were to approve this?
No, I don't foresee that, or there have been no plans or proposals.
I believe there's a fence that goes around the...
Maybe Mr. Griffin can clarify what's in the southeast corner there, if it's connected or not.
All right.
I was going to ask about potentially putting a fence around this, it looks like.
Oh, I apologize. The applicant proposes a five-foot fence around the property, which is what the applicant has proposed. That's not a condition for the PUD.
Any other questions for staff? Next is the applicant present.
Good evening, everybody. I'm a representative for Dreammakers. To address all your questions, there is a concrete barrier between the apartments and our property. Five cars? We're not out to get rich. We're out to just simply provide back to the community and provide something to our family. And it's a family-owned business, something that we're going to continue to grow, and we've owned the building since 2017. So, yep, five. We don't want to take off more than we can chew. And your question was...
You covered it. It was that concrete barriers covered my question. Thank you.
Is there any other questions or concerns that I can help address with that?
Any other questions for the applicant? I've got, I guess, she's here, a question for staff. So in the future, they wanted to sell a few more cars, is there a, what's the implications of that, since it's written in here like it is?
It would, it would most likely have to go through a minor amendment process for increase in lot size, in my opinion.
Yeah. So depending on how many additional spaces, it would require an amendment, could require a major amendment. If it's one more space, probably a minor amendment. I think what we have to do, if they were proposing that, we'd have to look at the, at the ordinance to see what, what they would be required to do as far as an amendment goes.
Okay. I guess you're comfortable with five?
Just five. I don't think, it might get to be a little bit much, so we're just utilizing the small space, and then we'll still have space for our customers to park. It's a multifunctional building. We don't want to become a eyesore, we want to come and give back to that area. That convenience store, if you're familiar with the area, isn't the best side partner to have next to us, but with that fencing and bringing that, I don't know, just better ambiance in that area, five is enough.
Okay. Cool.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I might add something that might be helpful here. There are other uses in that building. They have, they have a few different businesses they operate out of that building, so it's not just the car sales.
Gotcha.
So, yeah, that would be a very small car. So, yeah, that would be a very small car, car sales lot.
The field print, you were one of the gentlemen that came. We do a field print, third-party business there. The realty out of there.
Okay.
Yep, so just a little bit of everything.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Colb?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ma'am, the ten, the nine conditions that are set out in the staff report, you've seen all those in your, for the record, you're agreeable?
Some of those such conditions, and I'm.
I'm sorry, what?
I actually suggested some of those conditions, and I'm totally okay with those.
Okay, with the nine that are in the staff report, you're comfortable with?
Very comfortable.
You're okay with, okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move into public testimony. Each speaker to have four minutes to speak on this application. Anybody in the public want to speak on it? If not, we will close the public testimony and move into discussion by commissioners. Any discussion? And if no discussion, I'm open for a motion.
I've got a question.
Yes.
So with the yellow box and the blue box, as far as where the parking spots are allocated, is there free, do they have freedom to park the five anywhere they want? Or because of this slide, they have to park them in that location all the time? Because I would, I would prefer they have the freedom to kind of park wherever they want. I just want to make sure it's clear that they do.
I believe, yeah, that can be a discussion where they want these stalls. That's not said and sound, it needs to be the first five stalls on the far west side. Mike or Dan?
So, it's a good question, I want to make sure I answer it completely accurately here. So that site plan or that diagram, that is not specifically referenced, I don't believe, in the conditions. And so...
It was.
That being said, I don't, I don't see anything that would tie them to that corner.
That slide, Mr. Commissioner, was referenced from what the applicant gave us. This document, I believe it's in your packets. Just where they wanted the five, that's where they wanted the five spots. But, yeah, again, I believe we can negotiate that if they want to.
Okay.
Get somewhere else on the property.
Any other questions to staff? Not, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve, subject to the conditions in the staff report.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion on the motion? If not, would you please take the vote?
Mr. Tijobin?
Aye.
Ms. Hannah?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Mr. Cow?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Heron?
Aye.
Ms. Nelson?
Aye.
And Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you, next to Section E Discussion Items, Missing Middle Accessory Dwelling Unit Project Update.
Commissioners, I will provide you that update, I'll try to get through this pretty quick. So, the update here is in regards to some missing middle code amendments that we're proposing. It's a little project of ours. So this project entails a look at accessory dwelling units, basically permitting those in single-family zoning districts, looking at some parking changes, kind of arranged around missing middle, and then some density and dimensional changes. So things like, you know, how much zoning, you know, a certain zoning district has, what sort of density? We don't, those aren't really very good right now. So what is an ADU, real quickly? So carriage house, garland, mother-in-law unit. It can be detached from the principal structure, it can be within or integrated into the existing home. Why do this? It has potential to increase affordability. You can bring your family all together as a way to, you know, house folks. Just provide a wider array of housing options. Some of you might be familiar with Happy Days and might remember that Fonzie lived above the garage. So this is known as the Fonzie Accessory Dwelling Unit, nice little design there. We've got some examples in Topeka, the one on the lower left in particular was something that we received recently and did some legal not conforming research on. So that's actually two dwelling units on the same lot in the Oakland neighborhood. And we were able to determine that that was built before Topeka cared about accessory dwelling units. So that is actually legal, a legal type of situation, which we're trying to make legal now for everybody else. So what about lot size and density? So just a quick example of what we're talking about here. So our M1A is a multifamily zoning district. It requires for new lots, 4,500 square feet per unit. And that district has a maximum density of 10 dwelling units to the acre. So if you were to build a new fourplex under that zoning district today, it would require 18,000 square feet of a lot size. The example that's shown there is in the Ward Mead neighborhood, and that is a fourplex on that 11,000 square foot lot and has its own, and has all the correct parking on it. So there's clearly an issue here that we've got with our M1A, and that lot size is just too large for, you know, a nice infill situation like that. And then the issue too is that fourplex on that size of a lot creates 16 units to the acre, which is more than the max 10 dwelling units to acre. So what we're looking at with our lot size and density is to adjust those minimum lot sizes and to bump up our max densities, because we're just, we're not, we don't have enough going on in those densities for the most part. So the other thing here is parking has a hidden cost. So why are we talking about parking, missing middle parking? It costs money to build parking, it adds cost to, you know, rents and those sorts of things. So in most zoning districts, a 20-unit multifamily development currently requires 40 parking spaces. So we deal with that now by doing zoning changes or PUDs to get parking variances. And so what we're trying to do is create some situations where we're by right. So an interesting thing, that X1, that first, that second zoning case, X1 has a parking at a one-to-one ratio, which is something we're potentially looking at for other zoning districts. So we've already got a little bit of relief in our zoning code in certain, in certain zoning districts. Oops. That's weird. Oh, it went dark on mine. Okay, so process, so we convened an ADU work group. So a couple of planning, three planning commissioners were on that. We had two meetings and we discussed the draft, and we talked about some parking options. The idea here is to have some public meetings after the first of the year, after we clear the holidays. So we'll try to have some neighborhood meetings and maybe a larger community meeting and, and see how that goes. And then, so when it swings back to you, hopefully, we'll have a discussion in the first month. And we do that normally with text amendments, because we'll bring another, we'll bring a package of some other stuff that we want to change in our zoning code. So it won't just be ADU and parking, we'll have some other things. And it'll take a meeting to kind of go over all that with you and make sure everybody gets it. And then we'll try to come back then the next month with the action. And then ultimately, the governing body has to approve these text amendments and make ADUs legal or not in the city, so. So that's the process. We, you know, we've got a relatively decent draft of the ADU, and we'll take that to the public and, and see how it goes. And some of you might not realize this, but we did a survey, ADU survey, like a year ago, I guess. And we, we got a, got a lot of comments about accessory dwelling units. And it was a really interesting survey, just from beginning to end, how you could kind of see people's answers changing. Because as, as you took the survey, you kind of got a little more information about ADUs and what they were. And by the end, the numbers kind of changed. But there's clearly a market of people that are interested in ADUs, not the whole community. I think a lot of people don't really get it. That's kind of the point of the public meetings, to kind of talk about why they're, why they're an important part of our missing middle that we're trying to go through here, so. That's all I have, commissioners, unless there's questions.
All right, any questions for staff?
Nager? What is the timeline for this process?
So hopefully, you know, we'll have some meetings in January, February, and hopefully come back to the planning commission, March, April, around that time.
Okay.
Is this only getting applied to certain zones?
So accessory dwelling unit is a permitted use in our zoning code in certain multifamily and mixed-use zoning districts. What we're proposing to do is make it a permitted use in single-family zoning, which is the vast majority of the zoning in Topeka. So it would be trying to add another unit into that single-family zoning.
And is that limiting it to just, it's just one accessory?
Correct. Yeah, we're not going to get too crazy here and, and do more than that.
Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you. I'm assuming with some public comments, knew that if there was a public comment, it'd be listed? Is that the?
That is correct, there was no public comment posted on Topeka Speaks.
Okay, awesome.
I do have a, a different question, not related to ADUs, but more related to our cases tonight. On, on both of our cases, and in the past, here frequently, we're operating on old neighborhood plans. One of them tonight was from 2015, and the other one was from 2000. What is the schedule to update those plans, and how does that work?
Right, so just clarify one thing, the, the North Topeka West Neighborhood Plan was updated in 2016, I think. So not 2000, that was the original North Topeka Plan, that's been since updated.
Okay.
But anyway, so our typical schedule for updating neighborhood plans is tied to the Dreams Program, which used to be SORT. So whenever neighborhoods compete to be selected for Dreams One, it's called. And then that first year, so the next, so people, so neighborhoods will apply in '23 to be the '24 Dreams neighborhood, and that's when we'll do another neighborhood plan. So we're currently doing Holiday Parks, we're updating Holiday Park. And then we'll update again, whoever gets selected, or do a new one, it just depends, in '24. So that's, that's our schedule. We, we really are tied to the, the SORT process most of the time to do these.
So if a neighborhood doesn't apply, then it doesn't get a new, it doesn't get a plan, or it doesn't get an updated plan?
So I think it's possible through Dreams Two to potentially get some sort of update to your neighborhood plan, but we're not the full boat, not the full, the full process where we do target areas and, and that sort of thing. Because it's tied to, it's tied to dollars. The neighborhood plan updates are tied to the Dreams dollars, which is 1.7 million in infrastructure and about 330 in housing. So that's why we do the, that's partially why we do the neighborhood updates that we do. So it, yeah, you're correct, it takes a while. I mean, I think we like to say they're good for maybe 10 years, and then it's time to get a, a new one. But we don't, our schedule doesn't necessarily allow us to hit, hit them all when they're, they're due. There are some that are, that are definitely overdue.
Okay.
Dan, you're, you guys are fully staffed up, right?
We're not, we still are, well, we have a really good intern now, which I think you've seen, Zoe. But, but, you know, that's maybe half a planner, so we're probably down to half a planner. We have an open position, so we still have a, a position to fill. And hopefully we'll get that done here in the next.
So you, you can hire, you have authority to fill that position?
Absolutely, yes.
We also have an open zoning inspector position that we would love to fill as well.
Right, for anybody out there.
All right, any other questions, comments? Staff, do you have anything else to go over tonight?
Just your next meeting, there'll be a couple cases, is that right?
Yeah, two cases.
Two cases, and then the, hopefully the Holiday Park, Historic Holiday Park Neighborhood Plan will be back for action. I think you, you received an update in September, so I think we'll be back in December and we can put that plan to bed.
Would that have come to the new commission members? The three? Can we, can that get resent out?
Yeah, that's a good idea, we've got that, yeah, we can send that out. Trying to think of a, a good way to do that. But, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get that presentation out.
Okay. If that's it, we are adjourned.